Councilmember Norby?
Here.
Mayor Mungy?
Here. Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Norby?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Cole. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. First topic.
Mayor, we got two topics up this evening. First one is going to be a pavement management discussion with City Engineer Morgan Dwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this is kind of a preliminary follow-up to some of the effort that was done last year. We do do an overall roadway network evaluation on an annual basis. It's a part of just regular engineering and public works collaboration, trying to keep tabs in a quantitative fashion on the quality and the condition of our roadway network. This goes back to 2012, which was the first time the city of North St. Paul had started looking at, again, in a quantitative way, the condition of the roadways, both asphalt and concrete, knowing that we've got some concrete pavement downtown, but primarily most of our roads and alleys are asphalt bituminous. And they, obviously, I don't need to educate you on the fact that they deteriorate over time, right? And you have been a part of budget discussions and capital improvement planning discussions. And so, again, we have not yet kind of finished the 2024 version of evaluating what the current condition is. We look at a third of the city every year, so every three years, we have a generally up-to-date and accurate picture of what the overall city is looking like, looking at at this time. But as a part of our regular activity, we are not only just looking at what the condition of the roads are, but we're trying to project using computer software that is designed for these purposes and using kind of nationally-recognized algorithms, if you will, to try to identify not only how fast are things deteriorating over time depending on their age, have they recently been overlaid, have they recently been reconstructed? And every road is different, could deteriorate faster versus slower if it's built on clay versus better soils, right? So there's no standard kind of formula to be able to say that a road will need to be reconstructed in 20 years, or 25 years, or even 40 years. Everyone is going to be different, different cities are different. And so we're looking at, specific to North St. Paul, what is happening over time, projecting into the future? What are some potential funding levels that might be appropriate? This is all hypothetical and speculative information. There is a handout, I believe, at your desk. We didn't get it in the packet in time. However, we do have what, again, as I mentioned, is designed to build off of the most recent look that we have within the city, and then also looking forward into the future with a couple different scenarios, again, hypothetical. And I'll step you through these, referring to the handouts, and I don't, sorry, I don't have my screen hooked up, but hopefully that is going to be good. Is that going to be good enough if I just kind of step through the paper copy and the handout? Okay. So really, what we're looking at here is a timeline. I did it kind of in this format because it's more similar to what you're used to seeing for your capital improvement plan, where moving from left to right are the years, and on the Y-axis, if you will, moving up and down, there's different scenarios. Now, the first scenario, scenario one, scenario two, and scenario three. So those are things that were actually looked at and prepared and documented in a memo. I can't recall if it was presented to council, but certainly it's something that public works use in terms of trying to talk about budgeting, level of investment, inform those discussions with you all as you enter into those kind of decisions with respect to not just the next-year budget, but what is the capital improvement plan look like for the next 10 years? I can't recall if it's a 10-year plan. I believe the current adopted CIP is 2024 through 2033, right? So it's almost a 10-year plan. And so the first three scenarios, as I mentioned, those were prepared last year. We only looked out to 2029 in terms of looking into the future. And so that's why, if you look on each one of those horizontal bars for scenarios one, two, and three, the road ratings, or the network rating, which is an average of all of our roadways, not alleys, but just roadways, and only the asphalt roadways within the city, that's the average for the whole city. That, again, you look at individual streets and segments, and certainly if you live on that street as a resident within the city of North St. Paul, you're probably most likely familiar with the road you live on, or the roads that you travel on every day. This is just an average across the whole city. Again, it's a quantitative metric that cities can use just to get a general sense of what the average rating for their streets is overall. Is it increasing? Is it decreasing? What kind of an effect on that overall average rating is the level of investment that any given city might be putting towards pavement maintenance, pavement preservation, bonded capital improvement projects, like larger reconstruction projects that might be also looking at underground facilities like utilities, water, sewer, stormwater, that sort of thing. And we have all of those things actually programmed into the city's currently adopted capital improvement plan from 24 to 2033 in different years and different levels of investments. And so, again, last year, only going out to 2029, the three scenarios at that time were scenario one, what if we just stopped investing in our roadways from a capital investment and recapitalization standpoint and just did nothing? And you can see, in a general sense, that the overall roadway network, starting in 2023, decreases from a 56.8 down to a 41.4 in 2029. The three years previous identified, 2018, 2019, 2022, there's a little bit of gap there. We stopped looking at things during the pandemic. But you can generally see that even though there were capital improvement projects, like around Silver Lake was reconstructed in 2018, 2019, those are the actual, as measured, quantitative average ratings for the whole roadway at that time, right? And then, again, this looking what, into the future, what might happen if we stopped spending money on our roads, again, average would decrease from 56.8 to 41.4. Scenario two, which was just asked of me at the time as a what-if, you know, because I think at that time, there was some discussion about, from a pavement preservation standpoint, so not reconstruct, but overlay, or partial reconstruction, or rehabilitation, where you're actually not looking at the underground utilities, but maybe doing what you can in the most cost-effective manner with just the asphalt only, right? And so scenario two was, let's just imagine that we are not working on pavement preservation at all, but only the 2025 and 2027 reconstruction projects, which are the Casey Lake neighborhoods, Phase One and Phase Two, and those have been on the list for quite some time. What kind of an effect does that have? And as you can see, as reported last year, it still does decrease significantly, even though you're investing a significant amount in 2025 and 2027 with those full reconstructs of those neighborhoods. It is a smaller area, it's a smaller footprint. The city does have a fairly large city network of streets that, you know, that lower average is pulling everything down. And so even with those two reconstruct projects on the list only, it's decreasing from a 53.9 to a 43.6. So you ended a slightly improved point, but certainly not holding ground. Scenario three, again, developed last year, which is about, I think it is actually, where the budget landed and where the current capital improvement plan, and I should mention that capital improvement plans and CIPs are subject to change. They're not really meant to represent extremely accurately what's going to happen in every instance, much more than one or two years. But again, from a financial planning standpoint, it's an important tool. But scenario three represented what you currently generally have in the budget now, which is an approximation. When I use these numbers, I'm not adjusting for inflation, but the table does adjust for inflation. So you will see some of the investment numbers go up, but in general, we're trying to represent $2023 or $2024, and then, you know, there is some adjustment for inflation. The assumed inflation here is the same as the capital improvement plan and future budgeting, which I believe is 2.5%. That may be low, it may be high, we just don't know, but, you know, just so we're all on the same page, I tried to make this as closely aligned with the CIP as what you guys are all used to looking at and what you did approve last year. So scenario three, again, only going out to 2029, that adds in, in addition to the two Casey Lake neighborhood projects, and nothing, not looking out beyond that, but not looking out beyond 2028. It adds in approximately a $350,000 investment for maintenance overlays. So those are smaller projects, or projects where a much lower level of reconstruction, or I guess improvement is needed. Typically, you don't need any engineering or plans or anything like that. Those are things that public works can and has, certainly the last several years, quoted out individually without my involvement. So $350,000 for maintenance overlays, that's coming out of the street maintenance fund. And then in the even years, 2024, 2026, and 2028, again, adjusted for inflation, a $1.1 million investment, also for pavement preservation purposes. And those dollars, you may be familiar with the current year 2024 pavement rehabilitation project. So that is actually taking a combination of these funds into a bid package that we currently have a contractor. Under contract, too, they'll be actually starting the very first part of August, done by September, on a variety of streets throughout the city. Again, knowing that that's budget-constrained, these are not bonded projects, and so these are projects that, they need to be right-sized for the funds available, right? So that's trying to connect a project with what I'm representing in the 2024 column for scenario three. So that builds out, again, also taking into account the Casey Lake neighborhood reconstruct projects. That does slightly better, so decreasing, well, actually getting it to a 56.4 to start out with, taking into account what we're doing this year right now, that's already under contract, but it still is actually falling off slightly until 2029, you get to a 52.4. Now, here's where the update comes in, and again, this is preliminary, hypothetical. As the data for this year comes in, we'll have some more accuracy here, but it is generally representing the level of investment versus the returns, if you will, if we're going to use that overall network number as a metric, a quantitative metric, to represent what you're getting out of that investment. And it goes without saying, but we have many, many, many miles of streets in the city of North St. Paul that have not seen the benefit of a robust, ongoing maintenance plan like we've had for about the last 10 years, right? So that is kind of what we're working against here. And there's only so much you can do in a year. Budget constraints are real economic realities, are something that city councils have to wrestle with, right? And so that's really what we're talking about here. So scenario four is simply taking the same thing that I just explained in scenario three, right? Like, this is your CIP, this is your current CIP. But the question I was posed with late last week was for the workshop tonight, well, let's project that out beyond where your memo did last year. Let's get that through the end of the CIP. What's that going to do? So, again, you can see that it goes much further, further to the right, out through 2033, which is the end of your CIP, and a hypothetical ending overall network rating of 56.3, and we started at 56.4. So that scenario is just about holding our own, right? I mean, we're not necessarily significantly improving the overall quality of the roads, but the level of spending that you've identified right now in your capital improvement plan that's been analyzed by your finance director, that you've had discussions and that you've currently adopted right now, certainly does, by the numbers, by engineering analysis, does project out through 2034 to be about the same as it is today. There's some ups and downs there, but it's generally flat. That does include bonding projects, as I mentioned, not just pavement rehabilitation, but previously identified bonding projects, like the two Casey Lake projects in '25 and '27, and also in the CIP. I think right now it's called Margaret Street Reconstruction. It may or may not be a specific street, but there is a more major reconstruct project that's identified in 2029, so we're identifying that. I think Dan had just told me before the meeting that this may even be a little more conservative than what we have in the currently adopted CIP, right? So it could be that if the numbers in the current CIP are followed through with, that actually you would see a slightly better return than what I'm showing in this table, but again, generally flat. And scenario five, again, this was a what-if, to see what would the level of investment need to be, not saying, let's do larger projects necessarily for the reconstruction projects, but looking at, from a pavement preservation standpoint. So again, these are Millen overlay projects, or these are partial, they're not reconstruct project. We're doing very little utility work with these projects, similar to what is under contract right now, that'll be completed this fall in North St. Paul. And, but I bumped it up, just as a what-if scenario, trying to find a level of investment that might actually show, start showing an improving trend overall network. And there's no right or wrong. Again, like, you guys are making, are looking at all the information, you know, economic, political, everything, right? And you're making your budgetary decisions with all of those things in mind. But, again, just for the purposes of trying to look at what it would take if, in fact, an overall improving trend on that overall network rating for the city's streets would be something that would be wanting to get closer to or achievable, you could do better or worse than it, right? It just depends on, on the level of investment. And so what this is representing, in addition to those reconstruct projects in '25, '27, and '29, is bumping that pavement preservation number from $1.1 million up to approximately $2 million. Again, adjusted for inflation, so I'm using current year numbers right now. So adding about $900,000 to what you have been budgeting, or what you're prepared in your current budget, your current capital improvement plan, and your current analysis and impact to the levy, I guess, is an important thing, right? We don't have an enterprise fund that's generating revenue specific for street improvements, right? Where it's unlike water, there's no water utility fund that is funding water main improvements for streets, right? So there's no corollary. It's basically general fund dollars, unless we happen to have a grant, or we're using state aid dollars. But from a, 80% of our system is not state aid streets, and we, so we can't use those state dollars. So this is an analysis of what you would be doing from a city levy and city dollars moving forward. So what you can see in that last scenario, again, $2 million is not an arbitrary number. I did kind of look at a couple different things. It was necessarily a dollar that I wanted to try to find that would, again, hypothetically show an improving trend line. And starting in 2024 with an overall network of 56.4, in 2034, we're projecting an overall network of 60.8. So that is, it's not a significant improvement. Again, you've got a lot of miles of older roads that are pulling that average down, and in this scenario, you're certainly potentially investing more. Starting in 2026, I put a box around that, the $2 million in 2026, that's the first year that hypothetically, again, that those dollars would be bumped up. All the other reconstruct years in '25, '27, and '29 stay the same. You keep adjusting for 2.5% inflation. And again, that does show an improving trend line that could go up or down depending on the actual projects or the actual mileage that is picked. Again, these are not necessarily all identified street by street, and so our results could be better or worse, but generally, again, we're looking for something to give you all an update in terms of if this went out long-term, and if we kept level of investment the same, or decreased it, or increased it, this would be, from a quantitative standpoint, what you could expect to see over the years moving forward, right? So with that, I think I'll stand for any questions unless Finance Director or City Manager has anything that they would like to add, or ask me to add, but happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So correct me, good is 70 rating?
Well, so that's an excellent question, right? So if you're referring to the overall city rating, every city is different. It depends on their goals, their financial goals, what they, and typically, these decisions are made by city council, right? North St. Paul has never gotten to that point. We have had several discussions with previous councils about what a 50 looks like, what if, in terms of pictures of streets, what is a 50? What is 55? What is a 60? What is 65, 70, right? There are examples of that over time, and I can certainly bring back more information as you go through your budget and CIP discussions moving forward. But the city has not ever kind of picked a number. Some cities have stated goals. They might separate those goals based on residential roads versus collector roads, right? That's not uncommon. I would say what I have seen is a general goal. That doesn't mean that every city is at that goal, but they might want to be trending towards that goal. In the upper 60s, there are some outlier cities that either they started with better roads, or they've just been very aggressive with, you know, their level of investment that do have goals in the mid 70s, and in some instances, up to 80 even. But again, it's very specific to every city, and I would caution the council against trying to apply another city's goal to North St. Paul. Also, every city has a different track record, right? Like I mentioned, North St. Paul really started looking at asset management and pavement ratings, and, you know, well, we got to start somewhere, so how do we pick? That was, that's 2012. So that's a long time ago in terms of being able to do several projects to get us to where we are today, but some cities have been doing an aggressive capital improvement plan on their roads for 20 years, for example, which would, you know, you wouldn't be able to compare apples to apples, you know, one city's progress. And goals can be increased or decreased as time goes on, too. And I certainly wouldn't have any kind of perspective on what got a city to say, our goal is 80, versus we are okay with a goal of 68, for example. But I would say that certainly, to answer your question, you know, higher 60s would be something that would not be uncommon to try to strive for, knowing that several of your streets might be lower than that. And some certainly, if they've been reconstructed or rehabilitated in the near, in the near term, last several years, they're going to be at the upper end of that scale. And so it's always going to be a balance.
That's what I was trying to figure out, too, was, because I saw Maplewood in their newsletter, they're at either 71.1 or 71, or 74.1. I couldn't remember what it was, that's why I was trying to figure out how they judge and what the top level is, so. Question?
Any other questions?
I have some questions. So we certainly have county roads and state roads. Does that include that factored in these, or these are strictly just North St. Paul?
These are local city streets, correct. So Ramsey County, for example, has their own pavement management program. We're going to see the results of that coming up here this fall on McKnight Road, so that's not a reconstruct, that's their pavement preservation project. Certainly, county, bigger budget, and they're doing projects countywide, you know, each year. But similarly, and I can't speak to whether or not they have a goal or not, but they're trying to accomplish the same thing, where, you know, you're spending the right amount of capital investment dollars in the right place at the right time, you know, not too soon or not too late, because things do get more expensive if you let a road get too far down the road. Eventually, you get to a point where a road may not be suitable for an overlay anymore, like you have to actually reconstruct it, and that's certainly more expensive to do that.
Remind me the, just different lifespan of the different types of, that we have here? So we have maintenance overlays, how long does that last versus reconstruct, et cetera?
Sure. And maybe to answer that question, I'll take one half-step back, just to, in a broad sense. And these are things that in our, on our general annual memo, which, again, I can bring back and we can talk more about. But if you were going to build a road from scratch and just kind of let it do nothing, I mean, you, you may, it'll go to gravel at some point, and depending on a lot of factors, like the weather and the soil that it's built on, you might expect that that road might last between 30 and 45 years, 40 years, maybe. I think our standard curve, which, our standard degradation curve, as time goes on, it gets worse and worse and worse, and that's an algorithm or a curve that's supplied by ASHTO and some of these other kind of nationally-recognized organizations that a lot of different cities use. I think that ends at year 40, right? It could be more, it could be less. What we are striving to do here with a more modern, I guess, approach to pavement rehabilitation or pavement management over time, is we're trying to, as that curve goes down, at different points, we want it to go up a bit, right? So whether that's a Millen overlay or some other kind of improvement, and so as time goes on, we want to kind of soften that curve. And we'd like that to land at like 60 or 70 years. So it's not quite necessarily doubling things, but I think, again, it takes an ongoing attention to not skipping steps. Sometimes gaps can have an adverse effect on, you know, if you get past a certain point, you might miss an opportunity for a more cost-effective, lesser-expensive improvement that might, in the long range, 70-years range, have a big impact, okay? So that's kind of the goal, and that's what we're trying to do over time by overlaying projects, rather than just waiting until the end and then reconstructing them at that point. And studies will show that generally, you know, you will get more benefit per roadway mile by doing those lifecycle costs over time, as opposed to just letting it fall apart, reconstruct it, let it fall apart, reconstruct it. If you go several cycles into the future, you're going to be money ahead by actually, as a great metaphor, changing the oil in your car at regular intervals instead of just driving it until the engine seizes up, right? So it's just a part of looking at it from a regular maintenance standpoint. Now, to answer your question specifically, for a middle-of-the-road improvement, which might be a reclamation, where we grind through all the pavement and into the subbase, and we've done that in a few instances, like Helen, Helen from the Maplewood border down to, I think, 17th Avenue is one example, where that was ground up all the way through. MINDOT uses a 25-year lifespan for that, so it's kind of considered a partial reconstruct. You're not actually getting into the subsoils and totally cutting out any kind of bad clays or anything there. I think that might be a little conservative, and I would expect that we would probably see, you know, more than 25 years in that type of an improvement. On the more full side of a lifespan, if you fully reconstructed the road, like where you just core everything out, and you're bringing in brand-new sand as a subbase, and you're really improving the drainage, because it's the drain, the bad drainage and the bad soils underneath that really let, make the pavement break up over time. If you're fully reconstructing roads, and we've used this approach on all the roads that have been reconstructed in North St. Paul since 2012, that, that should be, you know, 35, 40, 45 years. Again, with, but that's if you do nothing. If you're doing some, you know, interim improvements there, like an overlay, that should extend out further, right? So a little bit better than a partial reconstruction. On the lesser side of things, like a Millen On the lesser side of things, like a mill and overlay where you're only taking a portion of the pavement and leaving some of the structure underneath, or even just going all the way through but stopping at the gravel underneath and then repaving, we would consider those mill and overlay improvements. That should get you into the 15 minimum, 20 to 25-year range, depending on the roadway. As I said, you know, like MINDOT throws out 25 for a partial reconstruct, and I think that, again, with good attention, you can do better than that. I think that you can do 20 to 25 years with a mill and overlay, again, as long as you're staying on top of little things like sealing the cracks every three years. You know, that's something that, if you, if you walk away from the cracks and just let it crack and the rain and the, and the freeze and the thaw from the winter gets in there and the salt gets in there, then it's not going to last that long. But, and on something like, we've talked about this before, something like the maintenance overlays, which is pretty simple, we're just milling kind of the edge of the road and crowning up in the center, mostly putting all of that asphalt over the top of the old road. It's, it's better than a Band-Aid, right? It's not just covering it up and then we think we're going to have to do it again in two, three years. I mean, there's really good opportunity, especially considering the work that I've seen that has been done in the city thus far, to get better than 15 years. You know, 20 years, I think, would be pretty reasonable for some of those streets. You might have some sections or segments because the soils are poor underneath where it maybe doesn't quite make it to that point, but I think reasonably, you know, 20 years is a good timeframe for a, for a maintenance overlay to expect, especially if you're, again, sealing the cracks, taking care of any issues with the curb and gutter that you might have. Sometimes we have underground utility things that lend themselves to breaking up the pavement earlier. So if we're trying to keep tabs on that, and I know Public Works does, again, that's where I think where those would land. And that's, I'm not getting into sealing cracks. I mean, those types of ongoing maintenance activities, they don't really have a lifespan. It's generally recommended that you're trying to get those things taken care of every three years. And I think that's what we have in the budget right now.
We've been deferring maintenance on some, so how many of these, when you go out, are we able to do these other alternatives besides ripping them up because of the condition they're in?
Many of them we have. Lesser versus reconstruct is what you're getting at. Yes, exactly. Really what's been driving the program from a reconstruction standpoint, especially looking into the future, are more utility issues, or that would be the idea, certainly. There is a shift in ideology here from 2012, starting in about 2029, where we would move away from larger reconstruct projects because the underground utility piece is so expensive, right? And we want to, or at least Public Works and myself have, and Finance have talked about the ability to just, knowing that if there isn't a pressing need, like we don't have a block where water main breaks are happening five in one winter or something like that, moving that level of investment into the streets for more overlays and more rehabilitation efforts to cover more real estate to be able to have a greater impact. So I forgot to mention that, but there is a bit of a change there that following 2029, it's every year, but it's just, it's less of a focus on underground and reconstrucks and more of a focus on pavement preservation and pavement rehabilitation, I guess. And at some point, it's, I think it's, I didn't do the math in my head coming into this meeting, so I was like prepared, but I believe the first reconstruct project in North St. Paul was 2014, and so we're probably looking at an overlay, you know, somewhere off, off the map here, 2014, 24, 34, yeah, 2034, so 2034 would be 20 years. So, you know, the city should consider, now, if you drive that street, it still looks pretty good. You don't want to let it to get to the point where it looks bad, though, because then you'd lose the ability to just do, kind of like do a topping to it or a less expensive kind of maintenance overlay. And so that should be the opportunity that we're looking for in that early 2030s or 2030 to 2035, I would say, to see if we can do that. And then we can let that go, it'll be done and taken care of, and it'll be on to the next cycle of another, you know, 15 or 20 years before the next overlay. And usually, if things are all working well, and this was reconstructed, again, from scratch, good subsoils or as good as we could do at that time, you could do three overlays on it potentially until, and if the soils hold up underneath, I mean, maybe even more, right? So you can keep doing those on 15 to 20, 25-year intervals and not have to come back to that neighborhood and fully reconstruct it. So that's where that 70-year kind of thing comes into play. We want, we would like to get through three and maybe even more overlays to get to that endpoint. And then at that point, it's been 70 years since the street's been reconstructed, and that would be the next opportunity for a full reset on the infrastructure lifecycle on that street.
But if you let the base go, then you can't do that.
Correct.
That's like, that's like Charles, between Charles and 17th and the 36th, the curbs are all, excuse me, are all concrete and all that, but it's just flaking apart, and I was told that I had to rip it up and probably start over.
Right, that's, that's kind of a candidate for a complete reset, at least on the inside, right? Full reconstruct sometimes means that you're taking all of the curbs.
We do get a lot of emails, that's why I'm trying to get, we get a lot of emails from, from people about streets. That's probably one of the main things we do, is why is our streets like this?
Okay.
Any other questions on, for Morgan? Just to kind of show you that the scenario number four is what the plan that we're currently on, which last year you adopted and went into effect this year with a 2% levy increase being dedicated. And again, that 2% increase is year after year after year. If we were to adopt that new scenario number five, it would be a 4% increase, and that 4% increase would have to go into effect in 2025 to be able to afford that scenario.
Right now, it's at?
It's at 2%?
It's going to go to 4%.
It would have to go to 4% if, if the City Council decided they wanted to move up to that scenario number five. That's in there, and again, as you can see, that, you know, at the, at 2033, that's bringing you up to the, you know, low 60s, 60.6. So, I mean, that's a, that's a piece of a discussion that we're going to end up having to have into the future, but.
Morgan, I'm a visualer, so I think it would be helpful if we did have pictures, like you said, that you'd be able to provide, just so we can see what stages are and the community can see the stages as well, so we all have a better idea of what we may need.
Yeah, absolutely.
And part of it, as we look at the numbers of 2023 and 2024, you know, that kind of money, we're only still getting up to 56 or 60%. We're not gaining a lot of ground, it seems like to me, because you look around the streets right now, and you compare maybe, you know, 5% better. That doesn't seem like much.
But if you were to, if you, if you look at it in comparison to scenario number one, where if you do nothing, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm saying, that shows how far behind we are, I think.
Exactly, and that goes towards.
All the years hasn't been done, we're having to do a lot more to it.
But we also can't compare ourselves to other cities, like Morgan said. And ideally, I would be interested in knowing what our city rating should be, or what we should focus in on, where I had mentioned, is 70 considered good, or is it too high for our city? What, what would be our average?
Yeah, it's a judgment call, and like I said, that's a City Council decision. I think having photos and a, and a robust discussion revolved around, you know, what, balancing all of the factors, economic realities, you know, everything that you folks have to take into consideration in terms of making the decisions that you do make. What is, what is the representative kind of average street that we would like to have? And then, working from that, you know, one of the analyses that engineering can do, which we haven't gotten to because there isn't a stated goal, we can, and I could even run just hypotheticals, so if the goal was 70 and we were going to try to hit that by some year in the future, you know, what would the level of investment need to be? So we can do budget constrained scenarios, which is, that's more what is, what you're looking at here, where if you invest a certain amount of money in your pavement, what, what are the results going to be? Or we can do a results constrained type of scenario where specific numbers each year are not necessarily the object, but you're trying to hit a certain number by, in a certain timeframe, and what is this, what's the algorithm going to tell you might be needed to be able to achieve that, right? So we can run it both ways, and that is, that would be a step in a direction that North St. Paul hasn't yet done and, and would be relatively easy to do, in addition to the pictures. So as a part of our annual rating, which we're using technology to do now, it's not, you know, somebody taking notes, like there's one, two, three, five cracks on a street, you know, this is all being camered and runs into the system kind of in a, in a computerized fashion. And so it's easy to be able to pull up pictures of the streets that we've been on, and we can show, like, okay, so this is Gerald Avenue, and this is currently rated, whatever it is, 15. It's not good, right? So, but whatever it is, you can see that, and we can have several examples so that you can see real-world condition, real streets in this current year, and that might help that discussion to moving forward.
We've been riding, yeah, been riding our e-bikes. My wife and I have been trying to hit all the streets in North St. Paul just to kind of get an idea. So we've been going up and down, then we went through Maplewood, you know, up by the freeway and back down and around just to see the difference, and there's been quite a difference.
Sure, sure.
So we need to work. Thank you.
Yep.
Jonathan here from Architects and Engineering. Can you discuss?
Yep, we got him already. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here today. Do you want me to try to pull something up on a screen, or can we just go with the handout?
I think the screen would be helpful if you have it.
Yeah, I can, I can do that.
Oh, yeah, look at the writing.
Pull this guy out, just plug into mine, probably?
I assume so? I don't know.
So appreciate you having me here today. I think it would be helpful just to give a little bit of a lead-in into our process. First off, basically, when we're asked to do a facility assessment, that means that we have a team of architects and engineers go to every building. And we really have kind of a snapshot in time of what we see in those buildings. A lot of times, we get good information from facilities folks that actually, you know, repair items, because when we go out to a building, we can't see what's been fixed seven times. We can just see, you know, with our own eyes, what's sort of deteriorating. So today, we're sort of midpoint in that process. I think there was good reason for us to try to get out here and just kind of show you where we're at with things, not the least of which is just trying to prepare for, you know, budget things coming up and looking at what investments you need to make in some of these buildings. Moving forward, our kind of next step is, you know, this is still sort of a draft form. So there's a number of items that, I shouldn't suggest there's too many, but there's some items on here that we still expect to have to add to this report, you know, small percentage of electrical items and certain technology items that just haven't made it on here yet. And then also, we would sit down with staff and kind of go through this list and look at priorities and say, you know, what's most important to get done? And if you look at this list here, this is sort of how we generally categorize those priorities. So priority one is something that would have to be done, you know, zero to two years, and that's maybe a life safety issue, or something that is deteriorating to the point where it no longer functions. Of priority, you know, two is something that we would suggest be done in the next two to five years. So that's something that, you know, might give you a really good payback within that timeframe, like LED lighting or something to that effect. Or it might be just other items that we expect to deteriorate within that timeframe. And then beyond there, the priority threes and fours get sort of nebulous, because you're just saying that's something that's going to happen after these other items that are higher priorities. And so the way that we categorize this isn't necessarily how every building and every client has to categorize these priorities, it could be done a completely different way. This is just usually our starting point. But getting some consensus from the city and how we prioritize those items will drive where those budgets or those costs land, you know, year to year, because it'll just line up with those priorities. I guess the, the next step beyond that is to really also look at each item in detail and make sure that there's nothing missing. Like I said before, when we go out to every building, we kind of get that snapshot, and we have discussions along the way with staff and understand how the building's functioning. But there's often times that things get missed. There's also times that we have a number in there and a certain amount of square footage, and, you know, Ron or Randy might say, "That's crazy, there's no way there's that much," or "I think you missed this area over here." And so there's sort of this refinement process along the way. The other thing that that suggests is that this is really sort of a living document. So we actually have set this up into like a database that has pivot tables that can be adjusted over time. So right now, any costs that I might present are really just today's costs. So they don't account for inflation, and as we sort of get consensus on those priorities, we can assign what year that would happen, and we can adjust what we expect that inflation to be. You know, right now, we're looking at 4% to 6% per year for construction inflation. That's just sort of the average that we've finally settled down into in our industry. But those things can all be adjusted, and that database can actually be, you know, handled by the city, and Dan can go in and play with numbers and do what he likes to do if we need to adjust those things along the way. So again, right now is just that snapshot to just give you sort of an overview of what we saw, and we kind of, you know, put this together last week to try to give you as much information as we could. But I do want to reiterate that this is just a draft format, and so if there's something that, in there that you go, "That doesn't make any sense," well, thanks, we'll make sure we get on top of that and kind of adjust it along the way. But I think moreover, you'll see that this is a pretty good idea of where we understand the building conditions are at. And so what I think I'll do here is I'll just run through, this is, you know, there's hundreds of items in here, so I don't necessarily have to go through each one, but I think it might be useful for me to just highlight a few things that, you know, maybe have a higher dollar value or where we see some themes amongst some different buildings. So as I scroll through here, I'll just start at some of the larger buildings, so Public Works and City Hall first.
Can I ask a quick question before we get too in the weeds?
Absolutely.
I'm concerned by the top right corner, this is our city, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, mine, the rest of mine say North St. Paul, so I don't know why it says that. Again, it's a database that we use, and so it's common amongst our clients that we have.
Just wanted to make sure we're looking at the right data.
There's nothing on here other than that little spot where it would have anything to do with the city of Aurora, so thanks for pointing that out. That's a mistake that needs to be corrected. So if I, if I just run through, you know, Public Works here first, and then I think, you know, I'll, I'll talk about those individual numbers and, and costs that we're seeing here, but then I'll kind of, at the end, stop for questions and go back, but then kind of maybe just summarize where we see some of those dollar figures at by building. And we can also categorize those a lot of different ways, whether it be by priority, by system type, so look at, okay, all of the electrical systems throughout the city, how much is that going to be? Or all of the, you know, roofs throughout the city, how much would that be? So we can kind of categorize and sort those things all in different ways, depending on how the city or how you want to look at it from a budget standpoint. So just jumping into Public Works, again, I think that there's, we typically start with exterior, we're looking at some overhead doors and some masonry precast that we would likely want to put in place. I'm sure you're looking at kind of these bigger items right here that we're pointing out. And then I think some other just minor things like acid wash the masonry and just sort of clean up the exterior. So those sort of aesthetic things, as you can see, have typically a little bit lower priority three, you know, we're suggesting some You know, we're suggesting some other ones like a water leak that would be a priority one, but it's also a smaller dollar item. So some of these items in here that we identify are also ones that, you know, the city may not necessarily be paying out of pocket to repair. It might be something that city staff actually do, but we are just taking a very sort of objective approach to it and saying, this is what we saw, this is what we think it would cost to fix that. But oftentimes, some of those smaller items get, just get handled by city staff. So then kind of continuing to go through on the interior, just some painting as that starts to age over time. Hydraulic lift that's sort of seen the end of its life. And then windows is pretty typical that we find, you know, looking at 15 to 20 years, you want to start planning for replacement of those windows. Some of them have drafts, so I think, you know, this doesn't constitute full window replacement of the entire building. Those are just the ones that we identified probably needed some TLC. So then continuing through mechanically, you know, this is typically where we see some larger numbers where you're looking at replacing all of the air handlers and VAV boxes. And again, what, what this tool helps you do is sort of plan for the future. Because it's a priority three, that doesn't necessarily indicate that there's something holistically wrong with it. We just go by sort of ASHRAE standards and, and building standards in terms of what lifecycle costs are for some of these items. So an air handler, you know, like that is typically going to be, you know, 25 to 35 years. And so when you start hitting that 20 to 25 year mark, we say, okay, you should start planning for replacement of that. Certainly you've had buildings or we've seen buildings where air handlers have lasted, you know, 50 to 60 years. But it takes a lot of work to continue to get those to run and parts become scarce. So those are just sort of some things to note. As we look at priorities with the city and talk through each of these individual items, you know, why something might be a big number, but it might get pushed out a little bit further too. So then we also identified just some asphalt replacement at the parking lot. So again, most of this stuff is just using sort of cost per square foot or cost per square yard or linear foot. We're using those unit prices to apply that to these individual items. Sometimes on the smaller items, it doesn't always apply very well. And so oftentimes, if you're looking at like one individual item and you tried to go hire a contractor for that, you know, just to get somebody to show up on its job site is, you know, a few hundred bucks. And so those unit prices, for the most part, are a pretty good indicator of what the cost is going to be. But when we start to work with a city on what the plan would be to potentially implement some of these projects, we might help sort of adjust some of those pricing because if you kind of lump it together, it sort of works pretty well. But when you split one of those smaller items off and just say, you know, let's do three windows over at Public Works, well, that might not necessarily be the exact cost that we have here because it sort of gets lumped together with some of the other items. So this isn't a huge swing, but you'll see that effect a lot more on some of the smaller items. Also, these, these costs are all intended to be project costs. So they're, they include all construction costs and soft costs. And soft costs is just, you know, contingency fees, testing, all those different things. If there's any sort of, you know, other equipment involved in the, the project itself, which typically for these deferred maintenance items, you know, they're pretty straightforward. It's just what you would need to pay a contractor and then have some contingency in place just to, you know, account for unforeseen conditions. But again, this is sort of what we would suggest is a full budget for individual items. And I don't have to have such a long commentary for every single item that I go through. It's just easier to tell me, tell you this as I go through and kind of give you some background on each individual item. So jumping to City Hall, certainly there's some just accessibility items that we saw that could be updated. Nothing we would say is imminent right now, which is why that's a priority four. But certainly things have adapted over time with accessibility code and something that we would suggest you just start thinking about making some of those improvements. As you look at some of the exterior issues, certainly some hollow metal doors and frames that are starting to deteriorate, pretty common in Minnesota. You have steel outside and, you know, rain, wind, weather, salt, all that kind of starts to eat away at those things. The same is true for those overhead doors at the garage. So those kind of need to be probably replaced at some point in the near future. And then looking at the interior, just some of the larger items, you know, looking at some carpet replacement, doing, redoing the epoxy floor in the garage, which is, you know, something that is quite expensive, but it's definitely one of those systems that tends to last for a long time. But that is a sort of lower priority because I think it's still in decent shape. But it's one of those larger budget items that, you know, we kind of like to try to get that in here so that you're really planning for it because it is more expensive. Running to mechanical systems, again, we've got, you know, replacement of those air handlers and VAV boxes. They're hitting that 20 plus year timeframe where replacement of those would, you know, start to plan for those. And then we've got some just smaller like air conditioning units that we would say are a little bit more higher priority. And that's, you know, the, the age is approximately is really the same, but they just don't last as long, those smaller units. And so the replacement tends to be pushed up a little bit further. Any questions or should I just continue to kind of pick and choose some, some items here to go through? Okay. Again, you got the report, so you're more than welcome to continue to read it after I leave here and, you know, shoot questions off to me or Brian or Dan or whatever and we can continue to talk about it.
I have, I have just a couple of questions. I think you've, you've touched on to it. So you, you have identified any ADA issues that within any of the facilities?
Yeah, for the most part, wherever we could identify them, wherever we saw them, we've brought those to the forefront. And so those are on the list. And again, the priority kind of dictates or gives you an indication of what we think is, you know, something that's, you know, more or less important in terms of accessibility issues.
And, and then I noticed usually in a facility, there's a bigger price tag on roofs, but I don't see roofs being identified in this.
Yeah, I mean, for the most part, I think those are under warranty and in fairly decent shape. But I think, you know, that's something that we probably need to take another look at. But some of the smaller buildings, certainly we have some asphalt shingle roofs on some of those park shelters that are covered in here and so.
What is the normal warranty on a roof then? This building's 20 years old, is it?
Totally dependent on what warranty was purchased at the time the building was built. It can range anywhere from 15 to 30 plus years. That's sort of a typical timeframe. So, you know, if this was a 30-year warranty roof, then it would just be outside of our 10-year earmark for these items.
So you verified that, so it is outside the same?
I, I think I'm, note that I need to.
Need, okay.
Double check that, but likely the city would have those warranty documents on hand, so. But again, I mean, that's another one of those things where if the roof is in really good shape and you don't have leaks, you know, just because it's out of warranty doesn't mean like the sky is falling. It just means, hey, you know, if there's a leak, it's no longer covered under warranty. You got to pay out of your pocket to fix that. And you need to start to think about replacement because it'll probably continue to happen and get worse potentially over time.
Were you up there as far as that, looking at the flashings and stuff? Is that usually where it goes?
I haven't been up there personally. Our architectural staff were up there.
They were up there?
I think so. But like I said, I'll double check that and verify.
And these are all the buildings for North St. Paul?
Every building.
Except for the community center?
Correct.
Is there a reason why the community center isn't on here?
Because we already went through that analysis previously.
But even though it's still an analysis, shouldn't we have all the facilities on here?
We can easily just incorporate that into this report. It's not hard to just copy it over and put it in here.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea, so we all have it.
Yeah, no, I, that's a good idea.
And council member, council member, should we just kind of, this is really a rough draft?
No, I understand that.
Yeah, it isn't the final report and yes, in the final report would include the community center. It's just that that one already had a complete assessment. It wasn't rolled into this at this point in time.
I understand, but as we're discussing facility assessments, it should be in here.
Oh, absolutely. But this was just the draft of the next contract that we have given out and that, and community center was not included in this next piece of the contract. So he's just getting all the formatting and everything. And obviously there's still some things that he needs to go back and verify and check. We just like to question with the roofs and so forth before he can give a final report. That final report will include the community center.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, good question. Thank you. So continuing on, just looking at like the, the trash building, for example, you know, that precast, precast wall cap, probably likely due for replacement at some point in the future. You're running through, I don't know how much of this, I need to stop and go through, but I'll just, I kind of highlighted some items on here and I'll just.
Yeah, just.
I'll note them and I don't know if I'm going to be able to follow along on the sheet and look at this at the same time that quickly. But so there's some just smaller water heaters at some of the park shelters that will likely need replacement. There's sort of a theme of some of the roofs needing to be done. Certainly, I think the majority of those are just asphalt shingle roofs. There are some metal roofs out there too, but I think most of those were in decent shape. There's definitely some of the enclosed buildings that have some windows and doors and things like that that need replacement. You know, that Northwood Park building, I think, is one of the ones that kind of had some of the higher costs of those different park buildings. And so in general, I think you look at some of these park buildings and, you know, we're ranging from anywhere from, you know, a hundred thousand up to, you know, maybe 200,000 in, in project costs. But those break down into a lot of those little different items. You know, looking at some plumbing fixture repair, by and large, most of the buildings don't have a lot for mechanical systems. It might just be an exhaust fan or a little auxiliary heater here or there. So those pop in here now again for replacement, but it doesn't amount to a whole lot of cost for the most part. There are a couple of spots, just because I have it highlighted here, where there's some upper level spaces at the concession stand and the press box where you may want to consider a lift for accessibility. But that also has to go through kind of the city building official and, and look at the building code and decide what's required. Because we've seen cities interpret that differently, we kind of just put it in here. But it has been something that's been identified in the past. And if you were to go out and build a brand new press box with an upper level that had a certain number of occupants, you would need to have a lift or an elevator. So I think that's one of those items that we kind of go back and look at and say, you know, is this like actually required by the city? Is it sort of a nice to have? And so right now we push that out of priority four because I don't believe that it's going to be required. But it's one of those things that you just maybe think about considering making those spaces accessible. So kind of jumping to, maybe looking at like that actual concession building, the McKnight concession building, I think that's one where, you know, we looked at the just kitchen area and some of the other finishes there, and I think that they're kind of past their useful life. And so just some updating and, and, you know, reworking of that space, I think would be valuable. And so I think it kind of is piecemealed together as you look at, you know, countertops or plumbing fixtures and things like that. But again, this is a case where you probably, you know, you could do kind of, you know, onesie twosie stuff or you could look at and say, we should just renovate that concession building. And so then you kind of add up all those different items and look at a more large scale project. Continuing on, you know, looking, I'll just jump to some of these well buildings. I think for the most part, you know, they, they kind of range in age a little bit. But I think really we saw some exterior things that were aging, some electrical items, including plumbing or lighting fixtures that could be updated. And then mechanically we identified that some of the well pumps themselves, you could get some energy benefit out of adding a VFD to those well pumps. And so that's one of those things where you could start to run some payback and see what that would cost. You know, if it's a, you know, $5,000 VFD, but you're going to save, you know, 1,500 a year on utilities. Okay, you know, what does that payback look like? And so is it valuable to approach that project from that standpoint? You know, just again, some of those exterior hollow metal doors and frames that are starting to deteriorate at those well buildings, I think that's a pretty common one. And then the asphalt shingle roofs, again, I think as you look through here, you'll see a lot of common items because they're the things that typically deteriorate, you know, with any age building. So I think that's kind of, you know, a broad overview of the buildings and kind of what we've seen. You know, once we get through this sort of vetting process with the city, we're certainly more than happy to come back and put a more comprehensive presentation together with, you know, some pictures and things like that where you can actually see some of these items because I think that that's helpful. Oftentimes in these reports will include those photos. We're just at the point now where we said, let's just get the numbers and some of the items out here and just sort of spread it out and see where we're at right now. So that was kind of the intent of today's discussion. Going, I think, forward a little bit, I'll just kind of summarize where those costs are at for each of the buildings. And again, the, the numbers would make sense if you were going to do every single project this year, which we, you know, assume is not necessarily realistic. But it gives you just a kind of idea of what that overall cost is right now. So at Public Works, we're looking at a project cost total of all of those categories, you know, just about 1.7 million. City Hall, Fire and Police, looking at about 1.8. And then you go to some of these smaller buildings, you know, three grand, six grand, 14 for the event building, 15 for the Housie Park building. And then again, Northwood Park is a little higher, 127. That concession stand building, just shy of 300. The press box, 199. And again, some of that is just more expensive elevator lift. And so that number, you know, you'd kind of push that off to the side. Now that number looks a lot smaller, excuse me. And then looking at some of those well buildings, I would, I think what I looked at is, you know, really ranges anywhere from 30 to 50, $55,000 per building. And so again, it's just some of those common themes with the roofs, the doors, any sort of windows that exist and maybe some minor mechanical and electrical items that would have to be taken care of. So, you know, overall, if you just add it all up, we're at about 4.7 million for that total amount. Again, you start to spread that out over time, look at that inflation, decide kind of what your priorities are and you can kind of start to build potentially some planned improvements to those different facilities. So with that, I don't know if there's any other questions or kind of thoughts about process moving forward, but that's just the overview I wanted to give today.
Looking forward to the full report?
Certainly. Happy to, happy to share it when it's ready, so.
Mayor and council members, just kind of for reference, in our process last year, we dedicated 0.4 or 5% of a levy increase to facilities. In that capital improvement plan that was approved last year that, from 2024 to 2033, just for your reference, and again, you know, if you look at these priorities, you know, without going into a lot of detail, they're all to be done in about 10 years. That's what our capital improvement plan is. So in the public works facility in our capital improvement plan, we had about $400,000. You can see this is coming in at about 1.7 at this point in time. So we're short 1.3 million in, in that facility. The City Hall, in our CIP, we had about 950,000. Right now it's looking at about 1.8 million. So we're, we're already shy about $2.1 million. So once this report is totally done, we'll incorporate it into our CIP. I'll throw together a 10-year financial plan. Obviously, it would require a, a, a significant increase in our, in our levy moving forward. So just to maintain the facilities. The water facilities that we've seen here seem to be pretty close to what we have. And again, I haven't had a lot of time to see this report. This report came just at, after about 4:30, so I haven't had enough time to analyze everything with it. But, and that'll be coming forth. But just to let you know that, you know, like I've been saying, we, we're underfunded in, in our facilities. in, in our facilities and so just to make that aware.
I think the only other item I'll note too is that, you know, maybe particularly for Public Works and City Hall, it doesn't suggest that there's any cost for sort of adequacy or programmatic items either. So, you know, if there's big changes in departments or, you know, a big swing in staff numbers or, you know, you added some sort of program or, you know, if police had some, you know, issue with the BCA and they had to renovate something for that, you know, this doesn't cover any sort of that adequacy or space needs assessment piece. This is literally just that deferred maintenance portion. So just want to make sure that there's an awareness that there's sort of potentially another layer that the city, you know, has that we, we don't, we're not aware of it, but I just want to mention that so that, you know, it's not covering that part of it. Okay? Jonathan, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Good to see you all again, thank you.
Any other business? If not, call for adjournment at 6:25.
So move.
So move, Councilmember Wong, second, Councilmember Cole, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.